Good evening and welcome to the October 8th, 2024 meeting of the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners. We're going to begin with a roll call followed by the announcement of the Open Public Meetings Law. Lou?
County Commissioners Cruz, Duffy, Gallo.
Here.
James, Lepore.
Here.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Here.
Director Bartlett.
Here.
We heard you.
I'm here. You actually started without me?
Really?
We're in the middle of a prayer session. The party didn't start at five thirty.
It must be my watch.
I lack credibility on that point tonight.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the Open Public Meetings Law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including any other notice adopted at reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk posted in administration building and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Very good. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Father, and to the standers, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's remain standing. Father Ryan, would you introduce our guest clergy member this evening?
I just met Pastor Basaro right before the meeting and he's down on River Street and I used to be on Eighteenth Street and he's been stealing all of my parishioners for years. So I'm glad I met up with you. All right, so without any further ado, we welcome the pastor of Riverside Church, Father John Pastor Jonathan Basaro.
It's all yours.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we gather before you today with hearts full of gratitude as we celebrate the rich heritage and contribution of the Hispanic community. We thank you for the beauty of diversity and the unique cultures that make up this county and nation. Lord, we live up to you, the two organizations we honor today, young people of the future of New Jersey and Yo Soy Así. We ask for your continued blessing upon their work as they inspire, empower, and uplift the next generation and create spaces of inclusion, creativity, and progress in our community. We also pray for Dr. Sandra Diodonte, the superintendent of Passaic Schools. May you grant her wisdom, strength, and grace as she leads with vision and compassion, impacting the life of countless students and families. Bless all those gathered here today and remind us always that we are one people under your care. As we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, may we be ever mindful of the contribution of all of those who have come before us and seek to honor them by working for justice, equality, and unity. We take this opportunity to ask you for the state of Florida, especially for the central cities, so that your powerful hand may protect them from the Hurricane Milton and any damage they may suffer. Finally, we ask that you bless Passaic County for board county commissioner who is sponsoring this event. In your holy name, we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Are you able to stay for the program? We have a certificate. Okay, terrific. We'll present that to you in a little bit then. Please remain standing, sorry, for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces and all those who've died from COVID-19, especially the 2,312 residents of Passaic County. Thank you. All right. I will take a motion for approval of the minutes of September 24th.
Make that motion.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Stay.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Here.
Director Bartlett.
Yes. I have a motion for approval of the proclamations.
Second.
It was by Gallo, Lepore.
Lepore.
County Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes. Matthew, the administrators report.
Yes, thank you, Director. As you said, we are here to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. Commissioner Cruz is representing Passaic County at Governor Murphy's Hispanic Heritage Month celebration in Drumthwackett, so he sends his reglets. I think we have a welcome video from him to start the program.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Bienvenidos a la Florida. Welcome to Passaic County's Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. I'm the Passaic County Commissioner. Unfortunately, I cannot be with you here this evening, but tonight's program surely could be memorable. We have three phenomenal honorees, all that have been breaking barriers and leaving the way for Hispanics all throughout Passaic County. Yo Soy Así has been an organization that has been speaking up for those who often can't speak for themselves. Martha Anse and the young people of the future of New Jersey have been creating opportunities for our young Latinos to continue on in education and in their future career paths. And Sandra Diode, the superintendent of Passaic School, has been ensuring that our children in the city of Passaic have the best education possible. So, without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, we will begin our program. We have great food afterwards, and we have great honorees that you guys are all going to hear about. I want to thank you guys for joining us, and at this time, I will turn the program back over to our director, John Bartlett.
Wow, well done. We're... Absolutely. Perfect segue. I want to invite my deputy director Sandy Lazara to join me down at the podium. We'll get started with our presentation of proclamations.
Hi, everyone. So, our first proclamation, and you're going to see a... All three of these proclamations have to do a lot with kids. And that's such a great thing, right? Because isn't it our responsibility as adults to take care of our kids? The first proclamation is going to go to the young people of the future of New Jersey. Martha? A pattern, that's the word I was looking for. A pattern. Come on over here. So, on behalf of the county of Passaic, the state of New Jersey, and the United States of America, we are all celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th through October 15th, 2024. And in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional members of the Hispanic community over the years, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Young People of the Future of New Jersey nonprofit organization. Whereas, Young People of the Future of New Jersey was founded by Mrs. Martha Anse on May 18th, 2016, as a nonprofit organization contributing to the education, training, orientation, and recognition of their community leaders and young people who are the present and the future of this country. Whereas, Young People of the Future of New Jersey hosts an event every year on the first Friday in June that gives recognition to 20 to 24 Latino youth of Latino parents per year who graduate from different universities and colleges. This year would be the ninth year these recognitions are being given. Whereas, Young People of the Future of New Jersey support Latino students of qualifying Latino parents by offering a $1,000 scholarship to three high school students which are awarded every year on the third week in November. And this year, 2024, they have increased the scholarship award to four high school students. So, therefore, let it be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic publicly honors and recognizes Young People of the Future of New Jersey nonprofit organization for their many years of work and service in bringing community resources, culture, and information to the Passaic County Hispanic and Latin communities. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, dear members of the Passaic County Board of Commissioners. I feel deeply honored to receive the award as president and founder of this magnificent, magnificent organization, Young People of the Future, New Jersey Nonprofit Corporation, in celebration of Hispanic Month 2024. This recognition not only highlights my commitment, but also underscores the collaborative effort our community. Services to others is a great reward, but the recognition is truly uplifting. I will continue to advocate work to achieve our shared goals for better community. This year, your recognition is great honor for our organization. Thank you. Thank you very much. This award serves a reminder that every small effort can create significant impact and encourage me to persist in such efforts. I deeply appreciate this recognition from you and the community. At the same time, I feel very proud of my roots and my culture. But the most important thing is that I am passing on to my grandchildren in the new generation. And I want to add, I am, I was born in Caja Marca, Peru. Thanks to this country that welcomed us, where we are now celebrating another year for our culture, Jerez. And I am so happy, very, very proud, and I want to say again, thank you. Thank you very much, the members of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll take a picture together and then we will...
Okay. Can you come here?
Yeah, bring the team up.
Our director, Sarah Marcela.
Congratulations. Good job. All right. Before we move on to our next dona ri, I just want to acknowledge our whole team here that made today possible. Of course, you've heard from our colleague Orlando Cruz, but Jasmine and Vivianette and everybody, Lou, who makes these celebrations come off so well throughout the year. We're fortunate to have an extraordinary team and we're fortunate to be in a county with so many extraordinary people to recognize. Passaic County, according to Census 2020, is now at a point where more than four in 10 of our neighbors are Hispanic. So, of the 525,000 people that make up the population of this county, that means that more than 200,000 trace their heritage back to, as all of you know, who have driven down the streets of Patterson and Passaic to so many places, to Puerto Rico and Peru, to Colombia and, and the Dominican Republic, and so many other places that, as with dignitaries, if I start mentioning them, I'm going to get in trouble with somebody for leaving one out. But, you know, it's, it's a tremendous thing for, for me especially, and I think for all of my colleagues, to be in a place where you can encounter so many cultures, so many backgrounds, and so much pride in each of those backgrounds. We've been to easily a dozen flag raisings over these last couple of weeks and months, which somehow is independent season for, for countries all over Latin America. And being here as we come close to the end, almost a week till the end of Hispanic Heritage Month, seems a nice culmination of all of that and the pride that it represents, the opportunity that we have to work with elected officials of those backgrounds, like Louis Velez here from the city of Patterson, and so many others. So I want to ask Gerlina De La Hoz and the entire team from Yo Soy Así, or whoever... Gerlina, you're the one in charge, as we know. So whoever should join us up here, please have them join us up here. This is a very special award because later this month, I know Yo Soy Así is having a gala to celebrate 10 years of the extraordinary work that you all are about to hear about. I was thinking about Yo Soy Así and their work half an hour ago, when, and many of you were here for it, when we were having our housing commission meeting. And we heard from Janice De Jong about all the new and changed rules for folks who need to apply for housing assistance here in Passaic County, rules that came down from the federal government in the course of their funding those housing opportunities. That's daunting under any circumstances. Imagine having to deal with those when English isn't even your first language. And you get the beginning of the sense of the challenge that parents deal with and that you, Gerlina, recognized and are fighting and working to help them through the work of Yo Soy Así. So I'm pleased to read this into the record. Whereas, the county of Passaic, the state of New Jersey, and the United States of America are celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15, 2024, through October 15, 2024. And in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional members of the Hispanic community over the years, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Yo Soy Así nonprofit organization. Yo Soy Así meaning "I am like this." And whereas Yo Soy Así was founded by Gerlina De La Hoz in 2015 as a nonprofit organization dedicated to advocating for and empowering special needs families from minority communities, particularly those dealing with autism and other developmental disabilities. And whereas Yo Soy Así is proud to be the first community-based agency in the state specifically to serve Spanish-speaking families, offering support in their primary language. And whereas Yo Soy Así has a compassionate approach that includes family-centered planning, connecting to resources, culturally relevant support, educational workshops, advocacy, partnerships for inclusivity, community engagement, and an upcoming resource center, a bricks and mortar spot opening this fall in the city of Patterson, that will provide more multilingual programs, training on special education, support groups, recreational activities, and additional care for children, adults, and parents dealing with autism and other disabilities. And whereas Yo Soy Así remains committed to the mission of empowering families, advocating for a more inclusive society, and dedicated to expanding their reach, enhancing their programs, and ensuring that every family has the tools they need to thrive. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic that we publicly honor and recognize Yo Soy Así for their many years of work, for their decade of work and exservice in bringing community resources, culture, and information to the Passaic County Hispanic and Latin communities. Gerlina?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Dunaina, please. I would like to call Eris, please, from Paco Pac, our sister organization. Please come with us, please. But tonight, my son Ethan has the micro, so he's going to be with you at this, at this moment.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ethan Reyes and I am deeply honored to be here today. Some of you may know that four years after me and my mom moved to NJ at the age of eight, at the age of eight, I was diagnosed with autism and ADHD. We came from the Dominican Republic, where the language, culture, and support systems for individuals like me were vastly different. It was a challenge for my mom to find the help we needed, especially in Spanish. She even went back to college to learn the language that she could better support me, but it took time. I remember how hard those times were for both of us. As many of you know, Latinos and Hispanics make up 40% of the population of Passaic County. We have one in three being immigrants, just like us. The highlight, this highlights the urgent need for accessible resources and support for families like mine. Over the past 10 years, Yo Soy Así has become a pioneer in advocating for Hispanic families dealing with autism and other developmental disabilities, not just in Passaic County, but across New Jersey. Therefore, on behalf of all the members of Yo Soy Así, I am here using my voice to express my heartfelt gratitude for the County of Passaic Commissioners Office for its recognition. It means so much to us and validates the hard work and dedication in our entire community. Thank you for all the mothers and families that, who have shown incredible endurance and love. You are the backbone of this movement. Every person is unique, but we all thrive when we feel loved, respected, and included. I may face challenges of socialization, but I stand here today because of the unwavering support from all of you. We have a big responsibility ahead of us. With one in every 34 children on this spectrum, it's vital that we continue to work together. Your efforts will make a lasting impact. In Yo Soy Así, which means "I am like this," we emphasize that we are family. It's an honor to witness how we are creating a more inclusive environment, one day at a time. Thank you once again for this recognition and congratulations to the other honorees.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Ethan, great, great job. Great job. Don't everybody go anywhere? Let's take a picture. Take a picture. Everybody stay where you are. I'll have my colleagues come down and join us here at the center. You did great, man. Very well done.
Give me five.
Here.
Okay.
All right. Hey, young man. You know what? Why don't you step up front since you're a little...
Well, I'm tall, so I...
Good job. Good job, everyone.
All right. Thank you very much. Absolutely. All right. That was terrific. Sandra, join us up front.
So, I, I get to give out another proclamation, and I'm really happy. This power of... Where's that coming from?
The county commissioner.
Yes.
Director.
Good for him. How cute. Dr. Diode is the superintendent in the city of Passaic, a really large school district. And she has made significant strides in the years that she's been there. And, you know, we all know that when we have good leadership at the top, it kind of flows down throughout the district. And you certainly have done that. I mean, you've, you have a great team, but it really starts up on top. And as a former teacher, I, I know that being the superintendent comes with a lot of responsibility. And it's not always an easy job. I know that. So, I am so happy to be able to present and read this proclamation tonight. And if you'll bear with me just for a couple of minutes, it really has a lot of great information. Whereas, the county of Passaic, the state of New Jersey, and the United States of America are celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15, 2024, until October 15, 2024. And in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional members of the Hispanic community over the years, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Dr. Sandra M. Diode. Whereas, Dr. Diode graduated from Passaic High School in 1989, holds a Bachelor of the Arts degree in Communication and Journalism from William Patterson University, and pursued further education, earning two master's degrees in multicultural studies and leadership from the New Jersey City University. Whereas, Dr. Diode has held impactful roles, including transitional bilingual social studies teacher, literacy coach, high school history teacher, supervisor, principal of Patterson Public School Number Five, Assistant Chief Academic Officer of Patterson Public Schools, and in 2016, she became Assistant Superintendent overseeing 20 schools and leading initiatives to enhance teaching and learning while combating chronic absenteeism. And we know that's a big challenge. Whereas, Dr. Diode fulfilled a lifelong ambition by being appointed Superintendent of Schools in her hometown of Passaic, New Jersey, becoming the first woman in Latina to hold this position. Her dedication to bilingual education earned her recognition as Superintendent of the Year for the Seal of Biliteracy in 2022 by the New Jersey Teachers of English to Speakers of Other Languages. And whereas, Dr. Diode earned her doctorate from Fordham University in 2023, focus...
Go around.
There you go. Focusing on educational leadership and improvement science. She currently serves as an adjunct professor at Fordham University in the School of Education and serves as a Board of Trustees member of the Passaic County Community College since 2021. Okay. As the governor's appointing. Whereas, Dr. Diode, under her leadership and her team, the Passaic High School graduation rate has increased from 58.2% in 2021 to 72% in 2024. That's amazing. That's really amazing. That's really amazing. Whereas Dr. Deodine resides in New Jersey, married to her husband of 28 years, Santos, and has two sons, Saint Jacobs and Noah. So therefore, let it be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Passaic publicly honors and recognizes Dr. Sandra M. Deodine for her many years of work and service in bringing community resources, culture, and information to the Passaic County Hispanic and Latin communities.
Now I have to take off my glasses to read. Good evening, distinguished guests, colleagues, friends, and Passaic Board of Commissioners. To all that, I just have to say praise the Lord, right? I'm highly blessed and favored. When Orlando called me, I was supposed to be at the governor's event as well, but I was like, Governor Murphy's going to have to... He's going to have to take my... I'm sorry, I'm coming to this award. So I just want to thank you so much. I was so excited. So I stand before you today with a heart full of gratitude and pride to be recognized by the county during Hispanic Heritage Month. It is not just a personal honor, but a testament to the collective achievements of our vibrant Hispanic Passaic County community. First and foremost, I want to express my deepest thanks to the county commissioners for this recognition. Your acknowledgement reinforces the importance of diversity and inclusion in our educational system and in our community at large. As superintendent, I've had the privilege of witnessing firsthand the incredible contributions of Hispanic students, educators, families to our schools and beyond. Our rich cultural heritage, our resilience, and our commitment to excellence continues to shape and strengthen the fabric of our society and Passaic County. This recognition is not mine alone. It belongs to every student, parent, teacher, administrator, my cabinet, my board members, my board president, my family, who really doesn't see me, my church family, my prayer warriors, my friends, my sorority sisters, and those who inspire and support my work. And this is for the haters too, who make me and my team work harder. Nothing like challenging a Latina woman with a great team, some hoop earrings, red lipstick, and an unshakable faith in her God. They will make it happen. And so let's be clear. Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to celebrate the past, but is also a call to action for our future. As we honor our heritage, let us also renew our commitment to creating educational opportunities for all students, regardless of their backgrounds, because we know that our students deserve it. So all within the sound of my voice, I urge us to continue to be role models and mentors to our students in society. So our students, remember that your heritage is a source of strength and inspiration. Embrace it, share it, and let it fuel your aspirations. In closing, and I promise you this was supposed to be a two-and-a-half-minute speech. I put it through my AI, but it looks like it wasn't true. In closing, I want to thank my family, my colleagues, my friends, my village who's here. Please stand up. You know who you are. Thank you for not considering it robbery to be here. My board president, my right-hand man. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This recognition motivates me to work even harder to ensure that our schools are places where every student can thrive and where diversity is celebrated every day, not just for one month a year. Thank you, gracias, and let's continue to make a difference together. God bless you all. To the baseball fans out there, let's go Mets. God bless you and forward palante. Thank you so much for this. I'm so honored.
All right. Congratulations. Good for you. Congratulations. Good seeing you.
Pastor Basora, would you join us up here again? I just wanted to take a moment before we conclude today's ceremony, and thank you for coming out. One of the things that I like about what we're able to do with these special ceremonies, it recognizes the faith leaders in the communities that we represent. And it's my privilege, you having delivered our invocation today, to present you with this certificate of thanks to you and Iglesia Riverside.
Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Now, if I know Orlando, there's lots of food downstairs. So don't leave without stopping down there, enjoying the buffet, celebrating with one another this wonderful evening and the wonderful heritage that so many folks in this room share. And thank you all for being part of this year's program.
Director, I'd be remiss if we didn't recognize Tony Perez, the executive director of the Patterson Parking Authority. Without having looked at my program, I just assumed he was one of our honorees for all of his contributions. So thanks for being with us here, Tony. That's all I have.
Tony got the parking garage named after him just last month. So it was very good to have you here, Tony. And thanks to everybody who came out to take part in this year's program. All done with the administrative report?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Fantastic. That brings us to county commissioner reports. I'm going to forego mine, but Sandy?
Yeah. I just want to remind everybody that on October 19th, Passaic County Paws in the Park will be held at Goffel Brook Park in Horithorn. And we invite you to join us that day. It's a really fun event. Thank you.
Thank you. Orlando's not here. Gary?
No report tonight.
Nick? Matt? All right. We do have a bunch of things on our consent agenda. I just want to make mention of one before we move on. And that is number six. This board is adopting this evening a resolution in support of the bill in Washington, HR 9528. That would redesignate certain facilities at the Patterson Great Falls National Historical Park in honor of Congressman Bill Pascrell Jr. And we are very glad that his colleague, his longtime colleague Congressman Frank Pallone Jr. has introduced that. And this board, having worked with Congressman Pascrell for the last quarter century and continuing to mourn his passing back in August, will very proudly support that resolution on tonight's consent agenda. So seeing no communications, that brings us to the oral portion of the meeting. Can I have a motion to open it? County Commissioners Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore? Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. So this is the part of the meeting where you all get to have your say. This is the public portion of the meeting. Please note that you're confined to three minutes. There are green, yellow, and red lights on the podium. Please begin with your name and address, and take note that anything you say will become part of the public record of tonight's meeting.
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Give us just one sec so we can point you in the right direction.
Good evening, good evening. Happy Heritage Month to everybody here. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Sagon Ezekiel Olani. I am representing my company, Priority Group Services. I'm actually speaking here today because of... I was awarded a contract. My company was awarded a contract. And that contract is RFQ 24021. And I'm here to just speak about my challenges with being able to actually provide services for this particular contract. So this contract is put in reference to Prickness Healthcare Center. I am a licensed staffing agency. I've been doing it for multiple years. And basically, the situation was and is that I have... This contract is a one-year contract, and I have not received any opportunity to provide services. I've reached out to Prickness Healthcare Center, and they've told me that respectfully, because of my rates, from what they're saying, is too high, that they can't utilize my service. I'm not sure how many other agencies are MWE, but this is also, you know, just a coincidence talking about Heritage Month. And basically, there's... Quite frankly, for my agency, there's no inclusion in terms of being an MWE. Before this contract was given to me among two to four other staffing agencies, I was asked to provide my MWE certification and also to provide the bill rates for my services. I'm going to be very frank. I understand that the services that I'm providing, there are other agencies that are bigger than mine, so their rates might be cheaper and might be lower. But quite frankly, I wasn't going to come because of, again, this is not my first contract I've had. I've had other contracts in New York as well as in Jersey. And, you know, I wanted to make sure I could build a good relationship. And this contract was only for one year, but something that made me want to come here today is because I received a notice just recently, in the last week, that the funding was increased by $2 million. Originally, the funding was 3.5 million, and it's now going up to 5.5 million. And I can tell you that not zero was being... I was not offered any opportunity whatsoever. I did a couple of things to make sure I can not just come here without, you know, taking some due diligence. I reached out to the council. I actually had a meeting with the council, the legal council. I believe his name is John. Basically, was asking for some resolution because on the contract that was signed by this board and the commission, I was able to actually have that opportunity. But quite frankly, I was basically pushed away. I really wasn't able to... There was no solution. They just told me the same thing that Prickness Healthcare Center's telling me. And I understand that this is important to make sure that, you know, we want a budget, so it's very important. But if this contract was offered to me, I would have loved to see if I could have had an opportunity to work with Prickness Healthcare Center. And just love to see this can be looked into. Thank you so much for your time. And if there's any questions, I can... I'll leave my information as well as my contact. If this is something I can share with you guys, that would be great. Thank you so much.
County Commissioners Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore? Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Ezekiel, you said your name was? I'll talk to our executive director, and when we get your contact information, we'll be in touch and we can figure out what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. That brings us to the consent agenda, letter L, for those of you following along at home. And we've got matters L1 through L49. Council, I understand there are no late starters and no need for executive session. Are there any of these items that any of my colleagues would like removed and voted separately? Okay. Seeing none, I will take a motion to adopt the consent agenda, L1 through L49.
I'll move it.
One second.
County Commissioners Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore? Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. That brings us to new business.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore? Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore? Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. Okay. One more reminder about the food downstairs. We'll see you there. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
County Commissioners Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore? Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. Thank you all very much. Have a great evening.